Yuminei, Trente, Hopson, Alessa Tonguan is back. We are now on item 18, consideration of the daily file. Bill number 64-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 64-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Telo T. Tydegui, Chris Barnett, Frank F. Blas Jr., Sabina Flores Perez, Shelley V. Calvo, V. Anthony Ada, Therese M. Terlahi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabrina Solis Matanani. An act to add a new chapter 16 to Title V Guam Code annotated and amend subsection 12.106F of Article 12.1, Chapter 1, Title V Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Artificial Intelligence, or AI, regulatory task force to develop a comprehensive framework for the regulation of artificial intelligence, or AI, in the government of Guam and private sector while protecting constitutional and organic act rights.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine.
Majority Leader, send along.
Speaker, move to excuse members not present.
On that motion. Sword.
Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number 64-38COR received 15 yea's, one excuse. Bill number 64-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 49-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 49-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Tina Rose Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Joe S. San Augustine, William A. Parkinson, Christopher M. Duennius, Sean Gumatautau, Vincent A. V. Borja, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon. An act to transfer lot number 258, municipality of PD, to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of expanding the footprint and capacity of the Vicenti A. Limtiaco Memorial Park.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number 49-38COR received 14 yea's, one excuse. Bill number 49-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 157-38COR. I'm sorry. I apologize. Bill number 128-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 128-38COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahi, Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Telo T. Tydegui, Sean Gumatautau, William A. Parkinson, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabrina Solis Matanani. An act to amend section 6205 of Chapter 6, Title 4, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring the copies of petitions for above step recruitments be posted on the Guam Public Notice website and sent to the Speaker of Elasasitut in Guahan.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yea.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number 128-38COR received 14 yea's, one excuse. Bill number 128-38COR is duly passed by the body. Now, bill 157-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 157-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duennius, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Frank F. Blas Jr., Chris Barnett, Joe S. San Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Shelley V. Calvo, Telo T. Tydegui, Sean Gumatautau, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend section 25.25 of Chapter 25, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to adding stronger penalties for crimes of third degree criminal sexual conduct committed against younger victims.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number 157-38COR received 14 yea's, one excuse. Bill number 157-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 163-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 163-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duennius, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Frank F. Blas Jr., Joe S. San Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Shelley V. Calvo, Telo T. Tydegui, Therese M. Terlahi, Sean Gumatautau. An act to add a new section 7146.1 to Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code annotated, relative to transfer on death beneficiary designation for motor vehicles.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number 163-38COR received 14 yea's, one excuse. Bill number 163-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 165-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 165-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Shelley V. Calvo, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Telo T. Tydegui, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Frank F. Blas Jr., Sean Gumatautau, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Sabina Flores Perez, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend subsection 3101D of Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code annotated, relative to extending the period during which holders of valid US driver's licenses may operate motor vehicles in Guam.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yea.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine excused. Senator Tydegui. Senator Tydegui, yea. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, yea. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-six-five dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-six-five dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-six-seven dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-six-seven dash thirty-eight COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., Telot T. Taidegui, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Vincent A. V. Borja, Shelley V. Calvo, Christopher M. Duñez, Shang Gumatautau, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, William A. Parkinson, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Therese M. Terlahe. An act to amend subsection three-four-point-seven-zero-F, three-four-point-seven-zero-I, and three-four-point-seven-zero-L-one, all of chapter thirty-four, title nine, Guam Code annotated, relative to increasing penalties for graffiti violations on public and private property.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yea.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-six-seven dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-six-seven dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-seven-six dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-seven-six dash thirty-eight COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, an act to add a new section five-one-two-eight to chapter five, title five, Guam Code annotated, relative to commercial lease extension for tenants in good standing.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, nay. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number one-seven-six dash thirty-eight COR received four yays, no, ten yays, four nays, one excused. Bill number one-seven-six dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by this body. Bill number one-eighty-three dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-eighty-three dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, and Federal and Foreign Affairs, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Shang Gumatautau, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo. An act to amend subsection two-B of Public Law thirty-four dash one-one-two, as amended, relative to supporting the Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency's ongoing efforts to develop the custom satellite inspection, holding, and secured sterile facility.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-eighty-three dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-eighty-three dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-eight-five dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-eight-five dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement, introduced by Telot T. Taidegui. An act to amend section three-one-zero-four and subsection three-one-one-zero-B of chapter three, title three, Guam Code annotated, as enacted by Public Law thirty-eight dash thirty-two, relative to adjusting voter times of registration and the term of appointment for registration clerks.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay.
Bill number one-eighty-five dash thirty-eight COR received thirteen yays, one nay, one excused. Bill number one-eighty-five dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-eighty-nine dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-eight-nine dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement, introduced by Telot T. Taidegui. An act to repeal and reenact chapter three, title six, Guam Administrative Roles and Regulations, and adopt the attached exhibit A, exhibit B, and exhibit C, relative to updating the Guam Election Commission election campaign contributions and expenditures, rules, and regulations, and report forms.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-eight-nine dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-eight-nine dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-nine-zero dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-nine-zero dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement, introduced by Telot T. Taidegui. An act to add a new chapter five to title six of the Guam Administrative Roles and Regulations, relative to adopting the updated Guam Election Manual pursuant to chapter nine, title five, Guam Code annotated.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-nine-zero dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-nine-zero dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-nine-two dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-nine-two dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabrina Solis Matanani, Therese M. Terlahe, William A. Parkinson, Frank F. Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, Shang Gumatautau, V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, Shelley V. Calvo, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Vincent A. V. Borja, Joe S. San Agustin, Telot T. Taidegui, Chris Barnett. An act to amend section six-seven-one-zero-zero, six-seven-one-zero-one, six-seven-one-zero-three, and six-seven-one-zero-seven, and to repeal six-seven-one-zero-seven-point-one of chapter sixty-seven, title ten, Guam Code annotated, relative to the appointment of the Veterans Affairs Officer and members of the Guam Veterans Commission, the powers and duties of the Veterans Affairs Officer, the composition and operations of the Guam Veterans Commission, and the definition of a veteran.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Luhon. I'm sorry, Senator Taidegui, Terlahe. One nay. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-nine-two dash thirty-eight COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-nine-two dash thirty-eight COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-nine-nine dash thirty-eight COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number one-nine-nine dash thirty-eight COR, as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries, and Public Broadcasting, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Vincent A. V. Borja, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shang Gumatautau, V. Anthony Ada, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Frank F. Blas Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, Chris Barnett, Telot T. Taidegui, Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Terlahe. An act to add a new section two-seven-zero-two-seven to chapter twenty-seven, title seventeen, Guam Code annotated, relative to adding a lifetime teaching certificate for experienced educators on Guam.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill number one-nine-nine dash thirty-eight COR received thirteen yays, one nay, one excused. Bill number one-nine-nine dash thirty-eight COR is passed by the body. Resolution number eighty-three dash thirty-eight LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Resolution number eight-three dash thirty-eight LS, introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Therese M. Terlahe, Telot T. Taidegui, Frank F. Blas Jr., Shelley V. Calvo, relative to the United Nations Declaration of 2025 as the International Year of Cooperatives and recognizing its importance in achieving sustainable development goals and revitalizing economic, social development for Guam and the Oceanic Region.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, excused. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Resolution number eighty-three dash thirty-eight LS received fourteen yays, one excused. Resolution number eighty-three dash thirty-eight LS. Resolution number 83-38LS is duly passed by the body. Bill number 173-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 173-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks, and Infrastructure and further amended on the floor, introduced by Therese M. Terlahe, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Telot T. Taidegui, Christopher M. Duennius, Sean Gumatautau, Shelley V. Calvo, Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr. An act to authorize renewal of the lease of Lot Number 2288-1-1-1 Manilao and the Manilao Coben to the Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 668, by amending Section 681103 of Chapter 68, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yay. Senator Barnett, yay. Speaker Blas, yay. Senator Borja, yay. Senator Calvo, yay. Senator Duennius, yay. Senator Gumatautau, yay. Senator Luhon, yay. Senator Munia Barnes, yay. Senator Parkinson, yay. Senator Perez, yay. Senator Solis Matanani, yay. Senator San Augustine, excused. Senator Taidegui, yay. Senator Terlahe, yay.
Bill number 173-38COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number 173-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 186-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 186-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Sabrina Solis Matanani, Christopher M. Duennius, Vincent A. V. Borja, Sean Gumatautau, Frank F. Blas Jr., Jesse A. Luhon, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Joe S. San Augustine, Shelley V. Calvo. An act to appropriate the unalotted balance of the Pharmaceutical Fund to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yay. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas, yay. Senator Borja, yay. Senator Calvo, yay. Senator Duennius, yay. Senator Gumatautau, yay. Senator Luhon, yay. Senator Munia Barnes, yay. Senator Parkinson, yay. Senator Perez, pass. Senator Solis Matanani, yay. Senator San Augustine, excused. Senator Taidegui, yay. Senator Terlahe, nay. Senator Perez, yay. Senator Perez, yay.
Bill number 186-38COR received twelve yays, two nays, one excused. Bill number 186-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill number 187-38COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 187-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, introduced by Sabrina Solis Matanani, Christopher M. Duennius, Jesse A. Luhon. An act to appropriate the sum of nineteen million seven hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars from the General Fund realized from bond refunding savings not factored into the fiscal year 2026 budget for capital improvement projects and life-saving supplies and materials at the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yay. Senator Barnett, yay. Speaker Blas, yay. Senator Borja, yay. Senator Calvo, yay. Senator Duennius, yay. Senator Gumatautau, yay. Senator Luhon, yay. Senator Munia Barnes, yay. Senator Parkinson, yay. Senator Perez, yay. Senator Solis Matanani, yay. Senator San Augustine, excused. Senator Taidegui, yay. Senator Terlahe, yay.
Bill number 187-38COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number 187-38COR is duly passed by the body. We are now on the voting file on the nomination of Julian R. Duennius, PT, DPT, to serve as a member, physical therapy representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Julian R. Duennius, PT, DPT, received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Doyan E. Morato to serve as a member of the A.B. Juan Pad International Airport Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Doyan E. Morato received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Zina S. N. Ruiz to serve as a member, Chamorro Cultural Representative of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Zina S. N. Ruiz received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Carl E. Torres II to serve as a member, parent, representative of a student currently enrolled in DOE of the Guam Education Board. All in favor, please raise your hand. Carl E. Torres II received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. Now, shall vetoed Bill number 119-38COR pass? Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga, Haga, and Guahan. Clerk, roque. I'm sorry. Shall veto Bill number 119-38COR be overridden? Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga, Haga, and Guahan. Clerk, roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yay. Senator Barnett, yay. Speaker Blas, yay. Senator Borja, pass. Senator Calvo, yay. Senator Duennius, yay. Senator Gumatautau, nay. Senator Luhon, yay. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez, yay. Senator Solis Matanani, yay. Senator San Augustine, excused. Senator Taidegui, yay. Senator Terlahe, yay. Senator Borja, yay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Munia Barnes, pass, nay.
Vetoed Bill number 119-38COR received eleven yays, three nays, one excused absence. Notwithstanding the veto of Imaga, Haga, and Guahan, Bill number 119-38COR was overridden by a vote of eleven members of this body. We have exhausted our voting. So now, the floor is open for brief extension of remarks. General Lady from Agate, you are first, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We've come to the end of the last session of calendar year 2025 and our first session of fiscal year 2026. As always, my colleagues on both sides of the aisle offered valid points, lively debate, thoughtful discussion, and, in the end, bills putting veterans at the forefront, improving election laws, strengthening penalties against sexual predators, fighting for overdue funding for our local hospital, and even certifying longtime educators for life. They were voted for passage into law and will be sent to the governor for her consideration. This takes me and my fellow rookies toward the completion of the first year of this term. Twelve months of challenges, trial and error, battles, but a lot of camaraderie. And for the most part, all of us collectively trying to do the right thing for the greater good. Someone asked me recently, "So do you think you're making a difference? What's the secret of changing the world?" I thought that last one was a strange question until I sat and I really thought about it. Which brings me to what I believe is the most important message I can impart before we end this December session, especially during this holiday season. And that is, be kind. It seems so simple, but at times it can be the most difficult task to perform. It's always easier to lash out against those who may have different views than yours or dislike those you don't understand. But taking the time to understand someone who may appear combative may help you discover that he or she may be suffering or facing a crisis. You never know what hardships or trials a person may be experiencing. They may be secretly dealing with an illness or recently lost a loved one. Some may be facing financial difficulties in their lives and don't know where to turn. Kindness can change the world. With such a high incidence of suicide here on our small island, your kindness and patience can mean the difference between someone meeting milestones in the future or taking his or her life today. Your generosity, good deed, or active selflessness could be the hope that someone needed to pull themselves out of a crisis and instead move towards success. Of course, as lawmakers, there's a lot more to this job than niceties and acquiescence. Sometimes heated debates and opposing views help refine a piece of legislation or even create greater clarity and understanding in the end. But as Chamoros, Guamanians, human beings, there is no greater way to communicate that genuine care and concern and the willingness to give because someone is in need. Happy holidays to my colleagues and to the people of Guam. God bless our island and God bless you all.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Would your leader say the law on your records?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as I reflect this past year, and more importantly, the work that still lies before us. This year, we have made real strides. We have passed laws to strengthen our economy, to improve our services for our people, and to provide better opportunities for our children and grandchildren. We have held oversight hearings, asked our questions, and tried our best to be good stewards of the public trust. But while we can be grateful for the progress we've made, we must be also honest with ourselves that the work is far from over. The needs of our people are still great. Families are still struggling with the cost of living. Our infrastructure still needs attention. Our young people are still looking to us for leadership and direction. Progress is not a finish line. It is a path, and our duty is to keep walking the path together. Over the years, and especially this term, we have made some very passionate debates over this floor. We have raised our voices and disagreed sometimes strongly, and we have fought hard for what we believe is right. That passion comes from the love of our island and for our people. But as I stand here as a statesman, to say that passion must always be guided by respect. At this stage of my life, I see more clearly than ever that titles and positions will come and go, but the way we treat each other will be remembered long after the votes are counted. Respect for each other, for this institution, and for the people that send us here must be at the center of everything that we do. Our Chamorro value of Inafamale calls for us to restore harmony, to make things right for one another, to care for the good of the whole, not just for ourselves. That is not just the slogan we say at ceremonies. It is the way of life that we call to practice, that we're called to practice, especially in the moments of disagreement. Inafamale means that when debates end, we can still look each other in the eye and, as brothers and sisters, as public servants working for the same island, it means we can disagree without being disagreeable, that we can challenge each other without tearing each other down, and that we can always return to the table in the spirit of reconciliation and mutual respect. As a Christian man, I cannot stand here and close this year with the Christmas season upon us without reflecting on what this time truly means. We celebrate the birth of Christ, who later died, gave his life for us, not because he deserved it, but because of his love and mercy. He taught us to serve and not to be served. He taught us to forgive and to care for the poor and the vulnerable and to love our neighbors as ourselves. In Christ, if Christ could sacrifice his life for us, then surely we could sacrifice our pride, our ego, and our grudges for the sake of our people. Surely, we can choose compassion over anger, understanding over suspicion, and cooperation over division. During this holiday season, when families gather at churches filled with prayer, let us remember that our calling as leaders is not to win every argument, but to lift up every family we can. I ask all of us today, my colleagues in this chamber, that our people are listening at home, to carry that spirit into the new year. Let us help one another the way Christ helped us, with humility, with generosity and with love. Let us live with the Inafamale not only in words, but in action, supporting our neighbors, caring for my number, guiding our youth, and reaching across differences to do what is right for Guam. As we look ahead, I pray that God will continue to guide this legislature and our island, and I pray that he will soften our hearts where we have become hardened, strengthen our resolve where we may be discouraged and remind us daily and remind us daily that every decision we make affects real families and real lives and real futures. We have done some good things this year, and I'm proud of some of the steps that we have taken. But I am more, even more hopeful about what we can do if we move together, forward together, with passion, yes, but grounded in respect, with conviction but guided by faith, and with the enduring Chamorro spirit of Inafamalik leading the way. And to the people of Guam, Sidus Masi, for your trust. To my colleagues, thank you for your service, for your dedication, and may God bless you and your families, and may God bless the beautiful island of Guam. Mr. Speaker, I yield Merry Christmas to my colleagues and the people of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Brief extension of remarks. Gentlemen from Tunning, sir, your recognition.
Sidus Masi, Mr. Speaker, colleagues, and to the people of Guam. I rise in brief extension of remarks to close this session with a simple but important message. We must keep working together. As Chair of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, much of what we do can seem technical. Budgets, line items, audits, appropriations, and oversight hearings. But behind every spreadsheet and every fiscal policy are real families, real small businesses, real public servants, who get up every day and keep this island moving. The numbers may be complicated, but the mission is simple: to serve our people. This year, we have debated passionately. We have disagreed at times, sometimes strongly about priorities, about spending, about how to balance fiscal responsibility with the urgent needs in our villages. That is part of the democratic process. This is our job. But as we approach Christmas, I want to remind all of us, including myself, that the spirit which we do this work matters and much as the work itself. Christmas is a season of hope, reconciliation, and gratitude. It is a time when families come together, when we put aside grudges, and when we remember that giving is more important than getting. If there's any place on this island that should reflect that spirit and unity and generosity, it should be in this very chamber. We will always have different views about the size of government, the best way to manage our debt, or how to allocate limited resources. But those differences should never stop us from finding common ground. When we craft a budget, we are not crafting a victory for one party or one senator. We are crafting a roadmap for the entire island. It should reflect our shared values: prudence, fairness, compassion, and accountability. In the coming year, we will face hard choices. Our people are still struggling with the cost of living. Our public infrastructure needs serious attention. We must modernize government, support our public servants, and invest wisely in education, healthcare, safety, and economic development. None of that will be easy. None of that will be accomplished by one senator, one committee, or one branch of government acting alone. We must work together, legislative, executive, and judiciary, to build a government that is worthy of our people's trust. We may challenge each other in hearings. We may press agencies to do better, to be more transparent, more efficient, more accountable. But even that must be done in a spirit of partnership, not hostility, in the spirit of building up, not tearing down. During this Christmas season, as the lights go up in our villages, choirs sing in our churches, I hope we can reflect on the example of service that the season represents. At the heart of Christmas is about a gift freely given, about a love greater than ourselves, about hope that will always overcome darkness. If we can carry even a small part of the spirit into our work, then we can listen a little more, assume good faith a little more, and show respect a little bit more, then our debates will be sharper in substance, but kinder in tone. Our disagreements will be real, but they will not be personal. And our people will be able to look at this body and say, they may argue, but are arguing for us, not against each other. To my colleagues, I want to say this plainly: I value each of you. We may sit on different sides of the aisle. We may vote differently on key issues. But each of you brings experience, conviction, and a heart for service to this chamber. The people did not send us here to win points against one another. They sent us here to solve problems together. So as we close this session and head into the holidays, I extend my hand in partnership to work with each of you to find common ground where we can, debate respectfully, and we must keep our focus on the people outside this building who depend on us. To the people of Guam, thank you for your patience, your participation, and your faith in this institution, even when we fall short. You deserve a government that reflects the best of who we are as an island: our generosity, our resilience, our faith, and our deep sense of community. May this Christmas season remind us that we are one family, one island, one people. Let us enter the new year with renewed commitment to be responsible with every dollar, transparent in every decision, and united in our determination to build a better future for our children and grandchildren. Sidus Masi, God bless you all, and God bless the island of Guam. Mr. Speaker, I also wanted to express Merry Christmas to the staff. And the fire is just looking beautiful. They've done a wonderful job, and thank you for everyone who's made our work possible. Sidus Masi.
Thank you very much. On brief extension of remarks, are there any others? General Lady from Baragada, ma'am, you recognize? Yes, ma'am.
Sidus Masi, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, staff, and the people of Guam. As we draw the December session of the 38 Guam Legislature to a close, we take a moment to reflect not only on the work completed, but on the manner in which that work was carried out. This body, rooted in law, strengthened by deliberation, and guided by our collective commitment to the people of Guam, has once again demonstrated that responsible governance is built in clarity, civility, and steadfast respect for process. Throughout this session, we confronted a broad range of proposals, each with its own complexities, implications, and potential to shape the daily lives of our families and our island. Whether addressing economic development, environmental stewardship, public safety, government accountability, or the strengthening of vital services, our considerations require discipline and thoughtful judgment. These bills were not merely documented on the docket. Their responsibilities entrusted to us, each one demanding careful review and sincere engagement. The conversations we held across caucuses, committees, and the session floor were substantive and at times challenging. Yet, it is precisely these rigorous exchanges that elevate our legislative work. They remind us that a robust debate, when grounded in respect, is not a sign of division, but a hallmark of a healthy democratic institution. Our dialogue on Bill 165 in particular exemplified this spirit. I extend my appreciation to all who contributed their insights and perspectives. The thoughtful engagement demonstrated throughout that discussion was a reflection of our shared commitment to fairness, transparency, and the pursuit of well-balanced policy. Still, the strength of this session rests not on any single bill, but on the cumulative weight of our collective work. The measures advanced this month stand as evidence that progress is achieved not through haste or unilateral action, but through coordination, patience, and a willingness to listen deeply. Each vote cast, each amended considered, and each question posed reflects our earnest effort to align governance with the need and aspirations of our people. We also recognize the dedication of those who work alongside us, our legislative staff, committee teams, analysts, attorneys, and the many public servants whose diligence and professionalism form the foundation of our institution. Their quiet yet essential contributions ensure that every bill debated and every decision made is grounded in accuracy, integrity, and the highest standards of public service. As we transition beyond this session, let us carry forward the lessons it has offered. Let us remember that the strength of this legislature lies not only in the laws we pass, but in the way we conduct ourselves in pursuit of them. When we uphold our view, when we seek understanding before judgment, and when we allow differing viewpoints to sharpen our understanding, we ensure that our work endures the purpose and credibility. The year ahead will bring new challenges. Some expected, others unforeseen, but it will also bring opportunities. Opportunity to refine our systems, uplift our committees, and envision a Guam that thrives, not despite obstacles, but because we met these obstacles, we dissolve and unity. Possibility exists wherever dedication and imagination intersect. And this body has shown that we possess both in abundant measure. May we return in the coming session with renewed vigor, greater clarity, and an unwavering commitment to the people who depend on our leadership. Together, let us continue building a future defined by stability, fairness, and the courage to imagine and pursue something bigger and better. Sidus Masi, may our efforts continue to honor our island and expand the possibilities for all who call Guam home. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. General Lady from Tunning, ma'am, your recognition.
Feliz Navidad. I've always wanted to do that. You know, I love the holiday season. So everybody, sing. But seriously, Mr. Speaker, you know, I truly love the holiday season. It just brings so much love and joy to everybody, even to your enemies. You tend to want to go over there and just say Merry Christmas. I mean, and we should. But let's work on not having any enemies. But first, as we wrap up this last session, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to first thank my colleagues for their vote to override the governor's veto on our Bill 119. I greatly appreciate that, and I think the people of Guam appreciate that as well. And as we prepare for the New Year's, and yes, a year is an election year next year. And I'm sure it will bring excitement, surprise, and even some drama, including on this floor. But election time also inspires me. It's a reminder of how the people of Guam show up for their families, in their villages, and for their godzu. Everyone comes alive during an election year. And that always gives me hope for the future. And with that hope comes responsibility. People stop me, Mr. Speaker, in the store or at a gas station, at events, and they tell me, "Telo, don't stop asking the hard questions." Why aren't the other senators not calling those things out? Well, Speaker, they expect me to speak up. I've been doing this for how many terms right now? When something isn't right, I will. I'll speak up. And if I see a bill that doesn't serve the best interest of our people, I'm going to say something. And if I'm going to keep pushing for better opportunities for our people in this legislature, then I will. Because right now, not everyone in this hall has a fair seat at the table. And that means that the voices of some people in this community are also being stifled. I'll continue to call out when wrong things happen here because that's what our people expect of me. And I intend to honor that commitment every single time. The people of Guam can sniff out when something is not right here, and I know they will be paying more attention to it, especially next year. This year also commemorated the 75th anniversary of the Organized Act. It reminded me of the important role this legislature plays and the responsibility we carry in shaping the health, welfare, and livelihood of our people. And as the United States prepares to mark 250 years since its founding, it's another reminder that democracy is something we are all blessed to practice and to preserve with every hearing, every debate, every vote, and every decision we make in these halls. So as I plan our Christmas menus, as we plan our Christmas menus, fight the holiday crowds, and think about New Year's resolution, the season always feels like the right time to pause and reflect on the blessings in our lives. I'm thankful for the trust of the people of Guam, for the opportunity to speak on their behalf. I'm thankful for my family, for those we miss and those who are still with us. I'm thankful for the love and support of the people I hold close. I'm thankful for the wonderful, wonderful staff in my office, Rowena, Teresa, Dylan, Alana, Isa, Andrea. And I'm thankful simply to be here today. Every day for me is a gift from God, and I always will use that day for good. As we close this year, I look ahead. I hope we continue to remember why we're here, to stand up for the people of Guam and do the work they expect us with humility, honesty, and hard work. I'm proud to serve, and I look forward to carrying that responsibility into the new year. To the staff of the Guam Legislature and my colleagues, to all of you and your families, and invite all those to your families, I wish you Feliz Pasqua and Adonkulu Sidus Masi. And at this time, Mr. Speaker, I would like to invite those listening to us today and to let them know that they can also tell their family and friends to come down to the legislature and see our beautiful display of Christmas trees by each senator here today that has put up. It's a wonderful feeling. Bring your children and feel the Christmas spirit here at your house, the Guam Legislature. Sidus Masi, Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you very much, Senator. Gentlemen from Momototumayi, sir, you got the...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Off the date to my people of Guam, Merry Christmas. I just wanted to talk about a poem I remember when I was in high school. It's this poem by Charles Hanson Town called "Around the Corner." It's a little poem about a guy losing track with his friend. And then over the years, just nothing happened, but eventually the friend passes away, and they never really got to see each other. And so I remember when I heard that poem when I was in high school, I made a particular effort to always try and stay in touch with those closest to me. And as I went on my grand adventure through life, in my early twenties especially, I got to see so much of the world. I got to explore and make friends all over the face of the earth. And one of them was my uncle Werner in Germany. He and my auntie over there gave me a ticket to Germany as a graduation gift when I graduated from GW here on Guam back in the day, back in 2004. And I got to stay out in Germany for two months, really getting to experience the culture over there. Me and my uncle, we bonded over museums and a love for Broadway tunes, you know, some Sarah Brightman and Andrea Boccielli kind of music. And I was 19 years old, and it was just the most amazing trip ever, very influential on how I saw the world and saw how much that we had in common versus that separated us. And I always intended to come back and see him someday. And I always intended to come back and see him someday, and I never did. And my uncle Werner passed away a few weeks ago. And I think about that old poem because despite our best efforts, it still sometimes happens. Sometimes life still gets in the way. So for this Christmas season, I'd like to share this poem with the people of Guam so that maybe they can hug the people around the corner just a little bit tighter this year because you never know when these Christmases and these special events will be the last. "Around the Corner" by Charles Hanson Town. Around the corner, I have a friend in this great city that has no end. Yet the days go by and the weeks rush on, and before I know, a year is gone. And I never see my old friend's face for life is a swift and terrible race. He knows I like him just as well as in the days when I rang his bell. And he rang mine, but we were younger then, and now we are busy, tired men. Tired of playing a foolish game. Tired of trying to make a name. Tomorrow, I say, I will call on Jim just to show that I'm thinking of him. But tomorrow comes and tomorrow goes, and distance between us grows and grows. Around the corner, yet miles away, here's a telegram, sir, Jim died today. And that's what we get and deserve in the end. Around the corner, a vanished friend. So I ask everybody to hold the ones you love and appreciate them. Goodbye, Uncle Werner. We'll see you in the great mystery beyond. With that, Mr. Chair, Merry Christmas to the people of Guam, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator, and my condolences and safe travels. Brief extension of remarks. Gentlemen from Telafol, we show you recognize.
Mr. Speaker, the proceedings today and since the establishment of our branch of government are recorded into our Legislative Journal, a document that is the Guam Legislature's official record of the actions that start across the hall in the public hearing room and end here with a vote of yea or nay on a bill before this body. It is that document that symbolizes accountability and precedent. It is the historical account of the business that comes before this branch as part of the policymaking process of our great island. The words spoken here and placed into the Legislative Journal allows our sister branches of the government of Guam a glimpse into the policy proposals, the debate, and eventually a vote, specifically how our respective vote mattered. It documents how our legislative powers are in fact exercised and interpreted. Mr. Speaker, we started this particular session approving at least two entries into the Legislative Journal. These proceedings will get there as well. I bring this up today as the leadership of the 38th Guam Legislature has prided itself and its members on doing something pretty novel and useful to all the people of Guam, and that is our collective jobs. The public hearing process, the markup process, the committee discussion on a measure, the staff preparation of committee reports, the committee chairman ensuring public notice laws are followed, the same chair ensuring stakeholders and experts come forward in support or in some cases, not supporting legislation. The submissions, the approval of the session agenda, the preparing of the documents and the document drive, and finally, the work we have just completed, which leaves one more step, an action or not, to becoming Guam law. Mr. Speaker, this year was a huge learning curve for me personally, and I remain committed to the work and the rules set out by our branch to include what's in this book. In fact, each day has been different than the next. What is not different? Ensuring that we meet the expectations of the people who elected us. Mr. Speaker, the first half of the term will be noted for so many good policies to support the whole of our island society. The second half should not be any different. The next few months will see oversight hearings. We will all probe the hard issues found over the past year and how we can, as policymakers, make substantive changes to support the people that we serve. I ask you, Mr. Speaker, to remain committed to that cause over the next 12 months. We, as a society, are depending on it. I also want to take some time to wish you and the members of this branch a very Merry Christmas. To the staff that support us, a public thank you. The work does not happen without the effort of those men and women appointed to serve and to support the Guam Legislature in so many different capacities. Let this public thank you from me, to my staff, and to the central staff of this branch as my outward appreciation of every single one of you. May God bring us all and Guam a great year 2026. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much. On brief extension of remarks. Any other senator wishing to speak on brief extension of remarks? General Lady from Baragat, ma'am, you're recognized.
Seduas massi, Mr. Speaker. As we approach a close of this year, I just want to extend my heartfelt wishes for all of you regards to a peaceful and joyful holiday season. This is a time to reflect on our values and our commitment of compassion, justice, and affa malik, living in harmony with one another and upholding our responsibility to care for our communities. It has been a year of challenges, and through it all, I remain deeply grateful for the resilience, generosity, and spirit of our island community. To my colleagues here in Elsla Torenguahan, to my staff and to all your families, thank you. I am grateful for your continued commitment, your hard work, your dedication to public service. May the coming year bring us strength, clarity, and unity as we carry out our responsibilities to the people we serve. From my family to yours, seduas massi. Happy holidays and best wishes for a peaceful and hopeful new year. Seduas massi.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Brief extension of remarks. General Lady from Jonya, ma'am, you're recognized.
Seduas massi for this opportunity. And as we close out the year, we reflect, as many have done already, on the work that we are doing as a government in meeting the critical needs of the people of Guam, including safe drinking water, food, shelter and housing, medical care, education, and many other government services. But the protection of our resources that will sustain our lives and our economy, including our lands, our waters, our oceans, our culture and heritage, continue to challenge us. There's still a lot of work to do to ensure transparency, accountability, and participation in government. But I want to thank all of those who continue to provide direct care for the critical needs of our island. And a special shout out and farewell to Superintendent Eric Swanson of GDOE and to Lilian Passadis, who retired this year from GMH, and the many others who retired this year from government service after many, many years of dedication and sacrifice. And I want to thank those who continue to serve in all fields of the government and those in private sector who grow jobs for our community with livable wages, and the hard workers in those jobs that provide the support services, supplies, and equipment to enhance the provision of the basic needs and enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. Serving in this legislature is not my first nor my dream career. You have seen that it comes with ups and downs on political, governmental, and personal levels. Every day, I have to, I'm not sure with the rest of my colleagues, but for sure, this is how I do it. I have to ask myself, why am I doing this despite other options professionally and personally? And some days, I'll admit, I have to dig very deep. But I remember every day who I love and who I work for, and I serve for them, the people of Guam, so that they can choose to stay here, to live here at home, to raise their children, and that all can thrive. And when I'm done, I probably will not have a hefty paycheck, but I feel like I will be rich from the reward of using my talents to the best of my abilities and trying my best for the people of Guam, fighting for them, not giving up on making Guam better. And I've been richly rewarded with company and support and meeting people in all different fields and walks of life. And I'm forever grateful for the criticism as well that brings improvement and for everyone who in their own roles, who are persevering, trying as well to make our beloved home better, including our staffs, our families, our government workers, and our private workers. And I encourage especially our nonprofits, and I encourage others, especially those with Guam life and work experience, to add their voices in this legislative halls. And during this Christmas season and into the new year, please do not lose hope. We must and will continue to work in honor and remembrance of those who fought before us, especially our war survivors who have overcome so many challenges to bring us where we are today. I wish all of you, all of the people of Guam, safe holiday season, and Merry Christmas, and the blessings that you need. Seduas massi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Brief extension of remarks. Gentlemen from Eben, sir, you're recognized.
Seduas massi, Mr. Speaker. As you know, it's always a competition to go last with me and some of my colleagues, but... Just speaking frankly, just with all due respect, Mr. Speaker and my colleagues, one thing I've noticed about this new majority is they really like to talk about how good they're doing, why just this morning, we heard them bragging about how much progress has been made. We even heard a colleague ask who's helping the most. And so it's a little ironic for me to hear a lot of this discussion during extension of remarks about being kind and inafa malik when the people of Guam have seen for this whole year very little kindness and very little inafa malik coming from this, the people's house. Being accused of drinking the Kool-Aid. Just for the record, I'm not much of a Kool-Aid guy. I've always favored chimera punch. But, Mr. Speaker, when I go out and I talk to the people that we represent, and I agree with the retiring speaker, some days it's hard. It's hard to come into this hall knowing that we don't have the votes to do what we believe is good, what we believe is right for the people of Guam. Sometimes it's discouraging, especially when this majority has done much to limit transparency, to limit accountability, limiting our speaking time, limiting the amount of time we have to ask questions of the directors of the agencies, Mr. Speaker. I don't think that benefits anybody, most especially the people of Guam. Because if we're talking about making good, sound policy to leave questions unasked or unanswered or on the floor, benefits no one. And from limiting speaking time to stifling and censoring debate, not allowing members to speak, that doesn't do the people of Guam any good. And so when we talk about the disagreements that we've had in here, they have been fiery. And I've really tried my best to not make it personal, but we are going to disagree, my dear people of Guam, because we are fighting over what we believe is right, what we believe is good for the people of Guam. The BPT rollback, which benefits the biggest of the big businesses on this island. Some businesses, Mr. Speaker, that some of our colleagues are connected to, some big businesses that their families own. That was one of the campaign promises that was made by this majority, and you delivered on it because you listened to the big businesses and the corporations. But all the while, our people have been crying. They have been crying for affordable housing. They have been crying about the cost of living. And they have been crying about the quality of life on our island. But this majority's priority was to serve up an $80 million tax break, again, to the biggest of the big businesses, when we offered solutions to really target these cuts to the small businesses that I think deserve them. So, you know, Mr. Speaker, we're gonna fight, we're gonna disagree. But I think it's necessary. Anytime anybody's trying to fool the people of Guam, to pull the wool over their eyes or to serve special interests over our people, I'm gonna fight. And I'm very grateful for my colleagues who stand up and fight with me. And I'm not sure what we're getting for Christmas. I know they used to make the joke when I was growing up because sometimes I was aguaguanai. They said, "Oh, you're gonna get charcoal for Christmas." And I used to say, "Oh, that's good. Maybe we can barbecue." But I also want to wish you a Merry Christmas, Mr. Speaker. And no matter what happens in here, as heated as it gets, as the insults that fly when the microphones are off, once I walk out that door, I leave all that in here, Mr. Speaker. So I'm very grateful to be part of this process. But again, I don't agree with a lot of the decisions that have been made by this majority, and I'm gonna stand up and keep fighting for the people of Guam, whether it's 2025 or 2026. And so Merry Christmas to my dear people of Guam. Esta munad and seduas massi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Brief extension of remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My colleague there, that was very interesting on his closing remarks. I really appreciated that. And, you know, absolutely, I think this majority has done a lot of good for the people of Guam. And I believe that even with the businesses, you know, I think sometimes our colleagues forget that our government, the government of Guam, doesn't print money. And our tax revenues come from the businesses, the same businesses that our colleagues speak about, about getting a tax relief. You know, what we don't, I guess sometimes what they don't understand is that those same businesses employ our own people here. That's how our people have a chance to get a livelihood, to bring an income into their families. And what would be really interesting, Mr. Speaker, is that... Let's see, you know, next year is a campaign year. Let's see how many of their campaign contributions will come from these same businesses that they're talking about. So, you know, I wanted to close out the year really in a festive mood, but remarks like that should, you know, really be cautiously spoken about. Because I think that when we do things like that and when people look at, you know, what they think about businesses, you get that thought out there that, oh, these businesses are not good. But these businesses are what makes our economy go. It's these same businesses that we talk about that help our people so that we can have a livelihood, so that we can continue to grow and prosper. Those big businesses that they talk about are the ones that give these local contractors the contracts so that they can be able to enjoy and pay out their employees. Is it a tax break? Absolutely. But it's a tax break so the companies can turn around and reinvest into their companies and reinvest into their people. And that's what it's about. It's about key... It's about keeping, keep moving forward, the realities. We want to speak realities. I know what realities are. And a lot of these members don't understand it because when we got outside these glass windows here in this hall, everything they talk about on this floor, they forget. It's just like the immunity of members on this floor. When we speak about individuals or we speak about, you name companies on this floor, you go out there and you do the same thing, and you get sued for slander or defamation of character. So we need to be very cautious how we do things. Yet we can debate issues and we can talk about the good and the bad. Absolutely. But let's not have that crap mentality to that because you're not climbing out of the bucket. You're going to pull everybody else down. And this year has been a very challenging year. But you know what? We still continue to move and we still continue to progress. And that's what we will continue to do, is work. Work together regardless of party affiliation, regardless of agreeing or disagreeing. We're going to work together. And I just want to say that all the hard work that all of our members, all of our staffers in all our senatorial offices and in Central here, they did a wonderful job. Thank you all very much for all your hard work. I truly appreciate it. And I know that it's this time of the season where, and I'm glad that, you know, we're ending session on December 5th and we'd be able to go into the holidays in a more joyful spirit and hopefully a giving spirit. Be kind to each other, love one another, be grateful for each other, thank one another. If you haven't made a phone call to those that you love, call them because life is short. You don't know when God is going to call. With that said, Mr. Speaker, God bless you all. God bless Guam. May you all have a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year. And may we all be safe during this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I am going to take advantage of the privilege of the chair and provide my address from here. You know, it's kind of interesting when you sit up here and it's been, colleagues, it's December. Twelve months have passed us by already. I'm going to take a privilege from here. Don't worry, I'm not going to... And I think that from this vantage point, you can see a lot of times the strife that goes on. But then I also see sometimes where in one bill, we don't talk to each other, but in the second bill, we do. I am taking the privilege of the chair. I'll take it from here. So I want to be able, we have our differences, but we work through it. I saw it today here. Some of us disagree with some bill and then, and agree with others.
Mr. Speaker, I'm sorry to interrupt, but point of order and with all due respect, extension of remarks must be done from the floor.
Thank you very much. I'm taking the privilege of the chair.
There's no such thing.
I'm taking the privilege of the chair.
In our rules or Mason's manual, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. And I just, if it is wrong for me to say thank you very much for continuing to express your honest opinions on certain things, and we may not agree on it, but that's expected of us. That's expected of us. And no matter what, it takes eight to move things. And sometimes the eight comes from both sides of the aisle. You know, it's kind of interesting because as we sit here, sometimes we argue. Today was the epitome of something else. Our staff was outside the doors, working together to build a beautiful Christmas scenery for others to enjoy, Republicans, Democrats, and otherwise. They didn't care that we were arguing with each other in there. They wanted to make it beautiful out there for the people. Let's not forget that. And with regard to calling a family member, please, or a friend, take that time to do so. So to my staff, to your staff, to the legislative staff, to all the people of Guam in behalf of me and all of you, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. First session is done. We go on to the second one, and we make it better. With that, Majority Leader Senator Rohan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn this session subject to call of the speaker, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
On the motion to adjourn this session subject to the call of the speaker, are there any objections? Without objections, so ordered. Merry Christmas, everybody.